Village of Cottage Grove Board Meeting to Order. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted.
Yes.
Okay, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Item four is public appearances. This is public opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Anybody? Okay. All right, item five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of September 19th.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion by Jennifer, second by John, to approve minutes as presented. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Under Presentations to the Board, we have a website tutorial regarding agendas, packets, notifications, et cetera. And I'm gonna sit back here and take notes.
Yeah, can you grab the screen board? It's a little short.
Yep.
Lisa's helping us move into the 21st century, so I asked her to show everybody.
Okay. Can everybody see that okay? All right, so we just wanted to go over a couple of things. You'll notice your packets, of course, this time were sent to you with a link so that you could get the exact packet. And that agenda was built within the website, so it was kind of pretty neat and easier, I think, for you because the documents, you could just click on it and if you bring your devices to your board meetings, it's easier than scrolling through pages of documents. But I did want to go through a couple of things with you on the website that you can do. This up here is to create an account. I don't know if any of you have done that, but you can do that. There's a couple of different features. With that, you can also, when you do that, then you can sign in, which I'll sign in as me here in a few minutes, but that is something that you can do. You can create your account. You also can... Let's go. I'm gonna make a test of this, it was working just fine, so there will be a minute. Well, when you go on, there are sticky notes that are on the far left of the screen. It'll have notify me, agendas, minutes.
Bill pay.
Bill pay, that type of thing. If you set up a calendar, if you hit notify, you can get the updates anytime you post anything to the website. So if there's an alert, you can get that via a text message or by your email. And you all have village accounts for your emails, so that would automatically go in there. Whenever we post agendas to the website, you would get an alert on that, click a button that says notify, so that would go out and you would get that automatically, so you would know when things are posted, whether it's minutes or agendas or an alert. And you can choose what you want to go into. Let me just see if I can get here. If you do that, you can pick which items you want to be notified. Let me just go into mine. So you could say you want all of the alerts, or you could say you want just the agendas and the minutes, or anything else that's on the website. You could choose that and then you would get that via a text or an email, which is kind of nifty. Let me just go back here. The other thing I wanted to show you is there's a difference between the calendar that you have in your email, which is the Outlook calendar. On the website, you can get to the events or the meetings, the agendas and notices in two different ways. You can go on the sticky bar on the left and hit the agendas and minutes. Otherwise, if you click here on meetings, it's going to give you that calendar, which is like in here. And here is the calendar for the meetings. So like tonight's meeting is right here. If you click on that, it will send you back to what is kind of the notice. If you scroll down... It's gonna give you the meeting, the location, and then it's gonna have this little icon here where if you click on that, it's gonna bring you back to the agenda. And you can choose to download that here.
It's like the computer knows that you're giving a presentation.
No kidding, it's like lagging. It wasn't doing support. But this is what it looks like when you go into the agendas and minutes. So if you click the download, you can get the packet. So you can do it one of two ways, and there's the packet. So then you can click on each one of the documents and it's gonna give you a PDF of that document.
So each part of the packet is embedded in the agenda, under each item?
And it's gonna open it in a separate window, so to get back out, you can just click out of it. And it's gonna, well, it's linked, there we go. And it'll bring you back. The other thing I wanted to note is when you go into the agenda and minutes, it's listed alphabetical after village board. Village board is listed first, and then all the committees are alphabetical after that. It's not gonna show it here because I'm bad at this one, but if you were to go into the minutes and agendas, which they can go from here as well, then that's how it shows. I think Alex, you had asked me about that, and then you also asked about the agendas, and that's where you could get it, because now we're linking them in both places.
Yeah, maybe you can make comment like this. I was having trouble navigating the new system, and you were super helpful, just called you up, pointed me in the right direction. It's fantastic, so I would recommend that to anyone else who's trying.
Yeah.
Just call you and it's, it's there.
Yeah.
It's just a trade.
But at that time when you called, it wasn't linked both ways.
No.
So now, now it's linked. So anything that's put on the calendar will have that little icon that you can click on and you can get it there, or you can go into the minutes and agendas and get it. I also want to point out that this calendar and your Outlook, I said before, are not the same. So like your Outlook calendar, if you go in your email, is gonna give you the whole month. This is only gonna put mine when we post them on. So we post the agendas on Fridays for the next week when we send out the notices to all. So that's one of the biggest differences. So if you want to look at a whole month calendar, go into your Outlook in your email and you'll get the whole calendar. Um, let's see. I think that's pretty much all of the little ins and outs nuances of it.
If anyone has a community event to add, just let us know, we can get that added to the events.
Yeah.
Calendar with a description would be helpful too, unless it's self-explanatory.
Yeah, and I mean, anything that you want, if there's a flyer or something, if you can email that, we can put it down, we can copy that picture on it, make it go up in the events, and it also can be on, you know, like the news flash, so that it's out there so anybody can readily see what's happening within the community. Here's where, I mean, it's easy, but if you get into the pages, you can always get back to where you want to be, or you can navigate where you're headed if you're not sure. If you go into government, it's pretty much gonna give you anything you want. And of course, my computer's not cooperating.
Should've done the presentation for at least 10.
No kidding.
From protest.
So again, here you're back at, you know, the village board, which is everything posted. Here it's in alphabetical order, so you can go down. It's gonna show if there's minutes, you can have this. If there's video, it's gonna show the little TV, anything that's attached. So it's pretty straightforward. I guess that's pretty much what I had on my list. If anybody has any questions, we have you to answer them. If not, if you need to go later, give me a call, I'll try to help you, walk you through it.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, item number seven is a closed session. At this point, I'll make the motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Baron One Paranoia, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would have, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories, or data or involved in such problems or investigation, operator's license application.
Second.
Second, I will call both Troy.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Aye. Alex.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session, just be able to do that.
Motion to approve all three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Alex, Alex seconded to approve all three applicants for operator licenses. Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. All right. Item 10, unfinished business. Discuss and consider options and opportunities to provide interactive economic development mapping for the village website. I believe we talked about this, the firm called Exeligent, doing sort of a commercial MLS type thing, and we had other options as well. Aaron?
Yeah, there were a few questions that came up last time around that we looked into a little bit more. First one was just double checking on some of Exeligent's competitors. There's several of them that we did some research on, but the most promising one was one called Location One Information Services. And they actually have a deal with Alliant Energy that would allow us to use their system free of charge. It's, it looks similar to Exeligent. It's, they have less of a network, so we might have to do a little more data entry on our end, but certainly the price is right and it's gonna look nice.
It is good.
There's also some report capabilities that visitors to the website can download demographics and things like that. So I think that would be a pretty good system for us to use. They've been working with Alliant for 14 years, they said, so it's not like it's a new partnership that could go away in a year or two. There's really no agreement we would have with them, because they have the agreement with Alliant that allows us to use it, so we can, it's just a matter of letting them know we want to use it, they'll help us set it up, and if we don't like it, we can just take it off. The question that came up last time was how broker fees are handled, specifically with Rudy Bush and the Commerce Park properties. Something Lee and I looked at with the agreement we have with Rudy Bush, which is a standard document that we have with them. I think it was Lee and I's opinion, it doesn't necessarily matter where the lead comes from. They would get a, they would get their cut just when the sale happens. There's also some lines in that agreement that we're obligated to let them know when buyers come up and pass that information on to them. Another question that came up last time was the issue of auto renewal. As far as Exeligent goes, they said they'd be willing to take that out, but again, with Location One, that's not really an issue. If we don't like it, we can just take it off, and it's really, we're under the agreement with Alliant. So the action item we'd be looking for is to direct staff to try out the Location One system and get it up on the website.
Could we agree?
The only thing I would add is that, you know, if it turns out updating things, getting, keeping it up to date and entering some of the data on our own, if that, you know, became real cumbersome, maybe we could revisit Exeligent or one of the other options, but I think it's reasonable to start with the free option and see how that goes.
Do we have to have that clause in there about the broker fees, Lee? I mean, when we sign a new deal, can we fix that?
When we sign a new deal, we can certainly make an effort to have that removed, but remember, this is about the third iteration of this, of that particular agreement, and so when you first enter into the agreement, you're able to specifically exclude clients or, not clients, but potential customers that you've dealt with beforehand. At least from what I've been able to see, it's pretty standard that they'll ask to have it be, where they do get a cut, no matter where the person comes from, where the customer comes from. Well, I mean, we could certainly ask.
So, is it not discounted, it's still the same rate?
Yes.
Did you ask if they use Exeligent?
They do.
They do? So we're already on Exeligent then?
We already, we have access to it.
They use it internally, we wouldn't be able to put it on our website.
But they're doing it for us?
Probably.
For the Commerce Park.
Yeah. Okay. Who would be doing the data entry for this?
I think Eric would.
You would be?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a projection of how much time a month we're looking at?
I would think pretty minimal. Once it's all, once we have the base ones entered in, there's not gonna be a ton of changes, it's just a matter of making a few phone calls.
Is this going off Matt's comment of when it, if it becomes like?
Yeah, I was just saying, we can at least give it a try. We can revisit it if we notice it starts taking a lot of time, or it's just real cumbersome to keep things up to date, we can revisit.
So it's like an hour a month, or four hours a month, or what is the threshold that we're looking at as being not free anymore? I mean, if you start spending staff time, then it's costly, so I just wanted to guess know.
I would take it hours or so a week, max, if they've got much over that.
Okay.
Probably wouldn't be over that.
After the initial data entry.
Okay. So, like four hours a month?
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on that.
Okay. I think that's a high estimate.
Could we get very much to do the Commerce Park, so you don't have to do that? I mean, there you have all the data.
For what?
Well, we have to enter in what's available in Cottage Grove. Basically, that's what you have to do.
We can have them set up a separate login for the commercial brokers, so we can...
And they can handle that part.
Are you thinking about cutting down some of the time?
I would cut down on ours, because we already paid in the market, the property. Just give them another... Yeah, and that'd take some of the burden off, and then you can focus on other.
So when this was brought up, it was brought up kind of from a CDA, so we just have to go back to CDA and be discussed, or?
I think these folks just wanted to give a presentation to CDA, if I remember correctly. So I mean, it just, one of the options that popped up, which is, I think CDA wants some kind of presence or even the reverb or something out there, but just to help us. So yeah, if somebody wants, what was the name of that company here?
Exeligent. Oh, this one, Location One.
Location One.
Is it like one, the number, or spelled out one?
Can we also let the, maybe the chamber know, and then obviously, properties can come to you and say, I have this, can you?
Yeah, we can.
List it for me, right? I mean, yeah, I mean, that's... Because I guess we're advertising private... Is there a disclaimer that we're not connected to the private sales of the other properties? Because like if we have Lot A, I'm just trying to, what's the protection, right? Lot A's up for sale, we have it listed on our website, Lot B's right next to it, and it got missed. Did Lot B come, hey, well, you're not advertising? I mean, what's the, we want everything in the system. I just looked in the system, there's actually, you know, 300 something things in Wisconsin. I did the search wrong earlier today. Doesn't seem, I touched Cottage Grove, nothing really came up, but...
I'm sure we can, I've seen disclaimers on some that say the municipality strives to keep it up to date, but it's not necessarily our information.
And if we're applying any information that's given to us, that would probably be...
We can certainly craft a simple or complex waiver, but the fact is that, you know, this is, this is really based through Alliant, and so it's certainly not gonna be our responsibility. We'll make sure of that.
No, no, we have to enter in the data.
Yeah.
So it is kind of on us. So if you put in $2 a square foot, the guy really wants $6 a square foot, and then, hey, you said $2, is that...
But the real question is, are we telling what's available everywhere, or just our stuff that we have? So, is it all?
Commercial in the village.
All commercial village available?
Yeah.
That's the intent.
We have to enter in all.
Then that data would be from other active sites available, so it'd be matching up with that.
So maybe sometime, some type of disclaimer is...
It appears would go with the more complex.
Well, it doesn't have to be, but it's just...
Well, I, you know, I mean, those are all good questions.
I mean, I'm looking at Location One's website, and it's very well laid out, but it's not linked to a municipality, right? So all of a sudden, you're having us or a third party say, hey, I guess there's some sort of links between the different realtors. You go to the Realtor A and Realtor B's listings show up, there's still some sort of, I guess it's all pulled off of an online system, so them directly entering the information.
We could sync it.
Yeah.
Part of the information we'll be putting in is who the broker is and what their contact info is, so presumably the person would then go to that broker and find the information source.
I mean, there's LoopNet, right? That's the other, yeah, just you type in Cottage Grove commercial properties, LoopNet comes up. And that's aggregated, how does that data get in?
From the brokers.
Brokers.
Commercial brokers.
Would it be better to do something like that? Because then it's their responsibility for the data, no? I don't know.
You'd be syncing in to there, but I don't know. Then you'd have to buy a bunch of memberships to be able to sync into them. I don't know if they have a version where you could sync into them without.
I mean, we're buying, we're paying for his time with a membership, I don't know. I mean, it's a catch point, I mean, it's, I think we see what Anna was like, you said.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'll move that we direct staff to start trying the Location One service and see how that goes.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do we have a measurement for success?
So many.
Like, so many in five years, or?
Yeah.
We got one.
One year trial, see what happens. Let us know what you think if it's a problem, or if you think we can do better. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First up is Clark's Rec. and Forests.
So we met on September 20th. As Sean told you, EAV is in the village, Oak Street by Governor Taylor Park, but it sounds like it'll be everywhere. Is that what I'm getting from you? So watch your trees. We had a request from the town chair, Chris Hampton, to meet with our committee. Several years ago, the town of Cottage Grove made a contribution to the village, and in return for that contribution, the town residents were treated as residents and not non-residents.
For recreation.
For our recreation programs. So three, four, four years ago maybe, they withdrew that funding.
Right.
And what they were paying was not covering the costs of including those folks as taxpaying citizens of the Village of Cottage Grove. But we, in order to cover at least that $5,000 that we were getting, we shifted to a tiered non-resident rate for the town residents. And we've been going along fine since then. I did receive an email questioning this from a town resident. I directed her to talk to her town chair and gave her a synopsis of what had happened over the past several years, and then Chris contacted us. So we met with him and we dug into some numbers as far as what we were bringing in in non-resident fees, what that would look like to include those folks as non-residents, and he wanted, he just wanted to get an idea of what that would look like. So he is going back to his committee, and when we hear from them, I will let you know.
What is the level of participation from the town residents, you mean, the lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 33%?
Oh.
36%?
Well, that's certainly worth it.
High participation. We saw no drop in participation when we added that non-resident fee, but I mean, kids want to participate in our programs.
Right.
Okay. The, just an update on Greg Haas's Eagle Scout project. As of our meeting, there have been no activity because the weather's just been atrocious. We did recommend our budget, so we are ready for Parks and Rec is ready for budget season. And our next meeting is the 19th of October at 5:00 p.m.
Jennifer, is the town requesting to have a seat on Parks again?
Uh, no, that was not mentioned. I can't imagine that that would be offered.
All right, fair enough. Net Vic Landfill Monitoring Review Committee.
It was a yearly riveting presentation from Strand and Associates for all of the results for the past year, and out of the results, there was no actionable deviations in the data, so that's all good news. We reviewed the contract for services from 2016 moving into 2017, and that's been handed over to the village. There's no major updates other than changing 16 to 17 for the base cost, and there's a portion, I think the total bill's like 18,000. The town has control of some of the rental monitoring wells because of residences in the area. The shared wells are split half and half. As mentioned in last year, the well number three, it has been collapsing, and we mentioned this last year, that it was probably gonna come up for 17 budget to have that replaced. So basically, it's an eight footer, 10 foot deep well, it's filling up with sand, and there's only about two feet of usable space, we were able to grab the sample. So Strand came back and said, hey, these are your options, you know, we could abandon the well, and that would, you know, be a $10,000 cost just to apply for permission. And that doesn't mean you would get permission to abandon it, so. And there's actually, you know, based on all the DNR, all the other things, the temperature of the climate, or whatever, there's low confidence that abandonment would even pass. So they provided some estimates for abandoning the old well, drilling a new well, completing all the DNR paperwork. They need to complete, they're gonna do a complete resurvey of the landfills, that's all gonna be the GPS marking and all this other stuff, as well as elevations of the well. And GPS sounded strange to me, but it shouldn't really be moving.
Right.
But it can go up, apparently. So they're gonna, that's included in this part of the survey. And then they're gonna do a site plan update, GIS mapping update, and the total estimate, and this is shared between the village and town right now, is 6133. So that is gonna be on top of the base. So the base is the same from 16 and 17, the only thing that changes is the dates of the agreement, and then they're adding in this estimate. And so they were going to handle all of that stuff. So all that information's been turned over. The data results and stuff, I also turned over to Matt before the meeting.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. And the monitoring of the wells has to go on forever and ever, or just?
Uh, yeah. Uh, you can debate the, you know, the landfill, which is probably dig it all out and replace it with a clean fill.
No.
That's, that's not in the budget, I don't, I wouldn't think.
Yeah. No, you would not want to really know what's in there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, it goes back to the original lawsuit. Um, and, uh, my guess is that Jack gets really more in function of the D N R saying, you don't have to monitor anymore.
Okay.
So, and I doubt seriously that's going to happen very soon.
Okay.
What's good is that there's no spikes in any of our data.
Right.
The monitoring, that's why everything's been kind of flat fees, there's, there's no, there's nothing to worry about.
A decade of nothing may be the only thing.
Potentially, but that's, we'd have to wait that decade, and then ask the question that is with that, that team, so.
All right.
That's where I'm at.
Okay, Law Enforcement Committee, we met Tuesday last week. Chief Labor gave us some updates on the budget, and L E C did vote unanimously to recommend approval of his budget request to the village board, which, I don't know if we have that information, well, we have it, the L E C members have it, but I can certainly get it to Matt and everybody else. It's a bit of an increase. It also does provide for the twelfth officer, is that?
That's correct.
Twelfth, uh, which is one of the cornerstones of that office report that we've heard about as far as accreditation and things like that, because it is a good idea to have two officers on, other than on paper, just to actually have two officers on all the time. So I can get the details to Matt for distribution. I don't think we actually voted on anything else. Uh, we, we've had quite a few updates on everything, but.
Oh, the robbery.
On the, oh, the.
The guy was charged.
Oh, the robbery with the break-ins?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He's been charged.
He has been charged, is that correct, Chief, the person?
Right, the, the gentleman that was committing all the burglaries was finally charged about a week ago with the burglaries. Five months afterwards, maybe? Four and a half months.
Managed to get into a few other issues while he was waiting to be charged.
Yes, in the interim, a sexual assault, a battery, drug possession, and they had the case sitting there for that, that amount of time. And it finally took us walking down there into the office of the prosecutor and basically pleading with them to get a charge that it finally happened.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, and we'll be meeting fourth Tuesday of October, which looks like the twenty-fifth, I believe. Yeah. All right, um, any other questions on law enforcement? If not, we got reports from village officers. Troy, your report. Okay, Kyle?
Um, went to the Culvers ribbon cutting, it was a nice ceremony, and the building turned out very nice.
Yeah, smells good downwind from there.
Yeah, it does. Uh, that's my only report.
Okay, it's, it's good to see it open. Alex, anything?
No report.
Uh, Jennifer?
Uh, the annual meeting for the, the Monona Grove School District is October fifth, seven P M. at the district office. Homecoming is October fourteenth. And just a shout out to volleyball and cross country, both of which are having great seasons. In fact, I was just talking with the varsity coach for cross country, and this is the first time in fifty years that our cross country has a shot at the conference title.
Wow.
So that's pretty awesome. And volleyball is on fire. I don't know that they've lost yet, so, great season.
Good to hear.
All right, Harvey?
Yeah, we're, we're.
John?
Uh, we met with the, the joint fire committee met last week and approved the initial budget for us to consider, so that's coming through here as well.
Okay.
Slight increase, there is slight increase for the building too, because of a few things.
All right.
But other than that, I think, nothing major.
All right, um, I have no report. Looks like Lee has an update on the income.
Uh, John DeYoung was out of town and has tentatively agreed to be your next meeting.
Heard that.
I know.
That he was out of town, or that he was in?
At least he would be at the next meeting.
Stay should be at the next meeting, right?
Is it supposed to go online in November again? There's some more, one tower, right? Is it November?
Apparently there's supposed to be a presidential visit or something, so they're.
Yes.
Putting off going online because they don't want one catastrophe on top of another one, is sort of what I've been hearing. So don't, don't plan on November. Maybe Christmas.
Well, um, that's what I would like him, really just want him to address for the board, what is the status? And what is the prognosis for it ever?
We can't be the only municipality not wanting to participate, are we? I mean, I would think.
Or wondering.
Well.
Yeah.
Uh, that's been kind of an interesting, you know, interesting to watch. I mean, there were a number of municipalities, um, early on, and it, it's almost like people just kind of gave up. And, um, there was a certain momentum to it, and, um, I think that the village is perfectly, um, that there is absolutely no reason why the village should be asking these questions.
Well, Lee, I think what happened, a lot of other communities, it, it wasn't questioned as much in the beginning, and then it was, once it was approved, then it was just allocated in their budget, and it just wasn't questioned thereafter. You know, it just wasn't a controversial thing for some other communities, so it just stayed in there.
So we put it in our budget for seventeen? I mean, whether or not we pay for it, it's two different things, but.
We've been, we, we had an allocation this year, just in case it came on, and, and we'll have our payment for next year in there too.
Okay. If you're so anxious for us to make this payment, why is it taking them so long to come in here and tell us?
Well, that's an interesting point, Charlie, particularly since the response that I, and, and Matt and I have commented on this, but, uh, we, I finally got a written response back from John DeYoung, who said, oh, I've returned all of your calls, and I've done, you know, and it's just like, come on. Uh, so it's just, you know, it's, it's really very frustrating, and it's also very frustrating that there's this feeling of, well, why are you asking these questions? And, and why, you know, why are you trying to make waves? And I said, well, basically, because, you know, I, I still don't agree that the contract is binding on municipalities. And I said, I think it's a, it's a fair question. If you're charging us for services, that we receive those services.
Can we give him a deadline? You know?
Well, that's why, I, that's part of what I planned when we, uh, when he's here, is to remind him of the language that is in our contract. It says if, if the services weren't in place on January first, we have the option to opt out, so.
All right.
January first.
I'm not giving you a hard time, Lee, I'm just kind of like.
What?
I'm not giving you a hard time.
Oh, no, no, I.
I, I just, you know, the guy's been on the agenda for how many times?
Yeah.
He doesn't show up, he's got all the excuses in the world, and yet, he's looking for money.
It's been like this for six years.
Yeah.
Almost.
Since twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the contract's only for each, don't worry.
We certainly could, can make that motion, and that was, that was specifically put into that contract when they came around, and, uh, you know, covered for respondents that went to the county executive prior to signing it. I pointed out all of those sections because I didn't want somebody to say, oh, he tried to slip that past us. And, uh, so the language is there.
So for next agenda, we could put discuss and consider participation in DaneCom, and if he doesn't show up by default, kind of whatever.
We can make that an agenda item, and the board can make a decision.
Been going at this four months now, waiting to hear from him, so. I think that'd be great, if we can put that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
I guess what happens with communications when you don't have, I mean, we're, we're in the old system now, someday this system's going to work.
Right.
Someday, yeah, maybe.
I mean, the concept is wonderful, but the reality is it's not.
Paying for services that we haven't gotten, it's just unacceptable.
It is.
Chief, when, I, I saw in your L E, in the L E C that there was some discussion about antennas, and was that part of the income?
Yeah, we have to switch over our antennas to go digital instead of analog, so we have to be prepared when it switches over in November. Otherwise, we can't use it.
But now, they're saying that it's not going to be November?
Uh, there's supposed to be a presidential visit, which they don't want to go online until after the election, which, because there's supposed to be a presidential visit a couple days before the election, so they're not doing it November first. That's what we were told.
Is this antennas on?
There.
Yeah, yeah, this is going to work really well.
Is this antennas on the, on all the port, like basically all the portable equipment, the cars, or you have a repeater, or just?
No, the cars and then the portables that the officers carry.
So with digital, you either have a signal or no signal, there's no fuzzy sort of signal? Is that how?
No, we have to convert, otherwise we're not going to be using it.
No signal.
Yeah. Okay.
That applies to EMS as well.
Yep.
Put it back to a tin can.
Okay, Administrator Matt, Easy, anything?
Yeah, um, some budget-related items. Just continue to compile things from the, requests from the committees, and I'll be meeting with Jack later this week to go over the current status. Uh, one thing that we've touched on in previous years is, you know, the need to pursue a, you know, full revaluation of the, of the village, and especially given this year that our equalized value, that the state does increase by fifty million, our assessed value that our taxes are based on increased twenty million. So there's a, a gap there that we're, you know, losing out on tax-based wise. Deb's gone out and gotten, went out for R F Ps for, you get assessment services, and we got a couple of those back. So that'll be something to look at. We have always maintained that the ratio between ninety-five and a hundred and five percent equalized value to assessed value. This year's increase in equalized value moved that to ninety, ninety-four and a half percent. So we're now just under further, you know, saying that we should move forward with a revaluation process. So, um, the disappointing part about that is we don't have quite as much flexibility with our mill rate as, you know, we thought before, but we should still be in a reasonable spot to be, be able to get, you know, most of the projects funded that we'd like to.
What does a reevaluation cost us, about?
Um, it was between ninety and a hundred thousand.
Ninety-six to a hundred and sixty.
Okay. Pretty good. This kind of has to be done now.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it'll pay us back in, in time, tax-based, because theoretically, it'll come in closer to what the equalized value, which is market value.
Okay.
Are we required to do, when it, when it's off like that? Are we, do we have a period of time that we're required to do assessment, or what?
Yeah, I believe there is a period of time, you know, we have five years to get in line. And then, then if you don't, then the state will come in.
Coming in, so we, we do need the clock is starting.
Yeah, and then, yeah, so, so, so Jack and I will be meeting on the, on the budget, and then next, a week from this Tuesday, the finance committee has a review of the budget.
Okay.
And then October twenty-fourth is the board workshop.
Okay.
Do, do we have contracts with other municipalities based on equalized value?
Fire department or anything, is that tied into this equalized value?
Um, if, uh, Deer Grove B M S.
So we'll end up paying more?
Yeah, it's got to be, what's that?
So what are we now, like fifty-one?
Yeah, fifty-one, fifty-two.
So that might swing more, like sixteen?
Um, well, theirs may have went up too, I, you know, we have.
Yeah, I think the town chair actually went up last year or something.
Yeah.
When they, yeah. So it's kind of a moving target.
Okay.
Uh, and then, I wasn't aware that this was going to be requested during that dementia-friendly discussion, but at least an invite from, Diane would like the board to be trained as well. We're going to be doing that, at least we have it penciled on the calendar right now for November tenth at nine A M. Just throwing that invite out there.
Okay.
But I don't believe that was how it was presented, it was a staff thing.
Right.
Pretty specifically how I remember that, but.
Can you send us an email on that?
Just to remind you, I'll not forget it.
But, that's it.
All right, Aaron?
No reports.
Okay, yeah, Chief, anything else?
Uh, we had that chase last week. It's happened at about two in the morning. In case anybody's asking, why are the police chasing someone for speeding? Normally, you take into consideration traffic conditions. Well, at two o'clock in the morning, there's not much traffic in Cottage Grove, and it was a very brief chase until he ran into a tree. Uh, he did go through some people's front yards and caused some damage, so, uh, but that was right before he crashed. And then the officer did use great restraint because he was fighting with this guy for four or five minutes, and the guy was trying to take his taser away from him, so it could have ended up a lot worse.
Yeah, this gentleman had a little bit of an issue in Oregon previous to this, I guess.
Yeah, he's had a crime spree growing, going that day, so.
Had a bad day that day.
Well, ended up bad day. For him.
All right, and the officers are okay?
Yeah, there was injuries to Officer Carter, but nothing serious. We'll be seeking various charges at the D A's office. I will be hand-delivering alcohol compliance checks, letters, to the, all the places that serve alcohol in, in the village, and it'll warn them that we're going to be doing an alcohol compliance check this fall, so that they're aware that this will be happening, and it will be a undercover person, an adult, but not yet twenty-one, that will be going into the various places to check for compliance. And why do we do that? Because it's numerous studies have shown that retailers and bars remember much better and have better compliance in the future if they're warned before you do the check. I don't see how, but they do.
All right.
Matt, what time was the tax workshop on the twenty-fourth of October?
Well, the, the budget, I think it's five-thirty.
Okay. Five-thirty on the twenty-fourth. All right, communications and miscellaneous business, first item is consider approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve the office's present.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by John to approve vouchers.
No, Harvey.
Harvey, I'm sorry. To approve vouchers as presented, any other questions?
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
Page seven, uh, we have a purchased Vinnie's parts, and it's an F-150 condenser. I don't know, is that something we could acquire from O'Reilly's, or is the price difference, or whatever? Again, this is, it goes back to the Cottage Grove First Initiative. Vinnie's is in the town of Cottage Grove, O'Reilly's is in the village, I think, if I remember right. That's all I'm asking.
I, I think that, that initiative is, it's not village, it's, it's the Cottage Grove community, I mean, that's the.
I, I know that, but I'm just trying to take it to a level that we have to be cognizant of. The businesses are paying taxes in the village. If we have services that we need and they can supply them, or, or products, then we probably should do that. And I brought this up before.
And I, I did write it down here, because I, I saw that we had that bill again, and I did discuss it with Administrator Geezy. So, I mean, if I'm told not to use Vinnie's anymore, I, I will do that, that's, that's fine.
All right, I mean, if there's a cost difference where it's much better at that, that supplier, then I understand it. But if it's apples and apples, then I don't understand it.
It would be, our, our other choice would be Mineke.
Mineke, okay, there.
Right, because this is service on our truck, and.
Yeah.
Uh, it's about the only vehicle requiring any service now, and, and the reason I kept going to them after you brought that up was because they're familiar with the maintenance history on it, and what's been going on, and what's, what's been happening. And they, they've done a good job and been very reasonable with us, and.
Okay. And again, as long as that's, that's being done, and they have the history and everything, and it's not outrageous, or whatever, and you can't get a better deal with somebody within the village, then I'm, I'm fine with it, but.
Yeah, I understand the comment, I just said, no, that was the actual policy.
No, it's not a policy, I just suggested it.
Yeah.
If it's a policy, then we got to go through a lot more hoops.
Right. No, that's reasonable, just checking that.
Right, I, I will take our vehicles wherever the board wants us to take them, it doesn't matter to me, I have no personal. I have no personal relationship.
No, and the history is already there.
There's a long history with them, yes.
Well, I think we would need to develop a policy stack. It's going to be written all in place of one work member, so do this, and another work member, so do that, you know? Right? So we should probably develop some sort of policy.
Yeah, we can.
I think it's valid. I mean, if it's available within the confines of the municipality, within, you know, with policy, may say a price differential, 2% or something.
We might want to limit to certain commodities. Otherwise, you know, purchases for other things that, I mean, just, it might just take a lot of time to be, every time you need to purchase something. I mean, it might just take a lot of time to try to research who has what and then where it's absolute cheapest.
For the, I mean, some of this stuff is, it's easy, right? Some of the stuff is hard, right? Paving and stuff, you know, some complicated stuff. You might want to go out to bids or some sort of, it's a garage for this issue. I know the staff is, I mean, we see it all the time, Ace Hardware. There is a lot of money spent within the village, by the village. I think this has been brought up a couple of times before with trusses.
All right. Other comments for vouchers? If not, we have a motion in second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 13B is correspondence. Anything in the main? Okay. Future agenda items. I know we talked about discussing, consider participation in DaneCom at the next meeting. Anything else?
The license.
Oh, the operator license. So another closed session at the beginning, probably. Okay. Any other items? Okay.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn. Non debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.